Welcome to the Tuesday, July 17th Board of Education meeting. The Board has been in closed session since 6:30 PM to discuss the approval of the July, I'm sorry, the June 12th, June 26th, and July 9th, 2012 closed session minutes and employment of employee. The next thing on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with thy feet and justice for all.
Our next item, and as always, the best item on School Board meetings' agendas, our student recognition. Mr. McDonough will talk about the York High School Boys Lacrosse Team.
In the meantime, I would like to call up the coach of the lacrosse team, Don Canfield, if you could come forward. It's the middle of the summer and the students are doing other things tonight and decided their schedule would not allow them to be here tonight, but the coach is here and... Oh, we do? Great.
Our strategic plan talks about hiring, supporting, and retaining the best professionals who follow the best practices that are research-based. And research has demonstrated that extracurriculars increase achievement and growth, and this is demonstrated by research. Coach here believes that lacrosse is an excellent sport for both boys and girls. And he's worked hard to bring lacrosse along to York, and this was the first season it became a sport. Formerly, it was just a club. This year was the first year York got its first conference victory. And then at the end of the season, something special happened. They kind of put it together. Last game of the season, fourth quarter comeback against a team that had stomped them 10-0?
14-5.
14-5. They win it in overtime. They start to make a run for the playoffs. They take a trip to the championship. And we love stories like this because they teach our kids how to overcome. They teach our kids about goal-setting. They teach our kids about discipline, hard work, teamwork, preparation. And these kids demonstrated it. They went to the championship and they almost got it done. They did get it done. They got to that championship. So all these things are brought to bear. Success is never guaranteed, but it is far more likely to occur if you believe in all these things. And these are the life lessons that we, as a School Board, support. And we thank you, and we thank the students who are here for bringing that story to us. So I'm going to read the proclamation. Is that what I'm supposed to do?
Maybe you should let the coach say a few words before the proclamation.
All right. I'll do that first.
And we have a few team members in the audience. Please, come on up. Come on up. More than just a few.
Okay. Great.
Come on up. Stand right in front.
Right in front, guys.
You can turn your backs to us, but face the camera.
Good evening. I'm Don Canfield. Mr. McDonough, thank you for the welcoming of our team and Board of Education, thank you for having us. I just want to start off by thanking you because since I've been with the program, you know, this, without you guys, this wouldn't have been possible. This postseason wouldn't have been possible. This whole season, the four years I've been here, wouldn't have been possible. So I just wanted to take a second and thank you for allowing lacrosse to grow in Elmhurst. And since you've done that, it's taken off tremendously with youth programs and now Elmhurst College starting a varsity program. These boys, the one thing I want to touch on was just the hard work throughout the season. Six days a week for over three months. You know, they came practice ready to work every day, and we peaked at the right time. All that hard work paid off at the end of the season. And apparently, it might have been a little too much work because I only have four. I swear the team is made up of more than four guys, but maybe they're a little tired in that summer break, so I'm giving them a break. The last thing I just wanted to touch on was, you know, just the hard work paid off all season, and I know Mr. McDonough touched on it, but Lombard West, you know, a conference rival, a team I had not beaten since I've been coaching here. None of the boys on the team have beaten. We lost 14-5 in a brutal loss the week prior, and we came back to win in overtime in the last game of the regular season, 5-4. So it was a really cool experience to see the boys overcome adversity and, you know, just get it done on the field. So thank you all for having us, and we look forward to more support in the future.
I've got here.
Oh, I've got Alex Montesantos, Austin Kleibon, Matt Bagdanowicz, and Zach Ubrriaco.
And I'll quickly read the proclamation. Whereas the Illinois High School Lacrosse Association B-Class Lacrosse Cup Championship Game was held on June 2nd, 2012, at Palatine High School. And whereas the York Community High School Boys Lacrosse Team finished the year with a 14-9 overall season and reached the playoffs by achieving an 11-4 victory over number 26-seeded Montini High School in the first round, prevailed 8-3 over 10th-seeded Vernon Hills, overcame 2nd-seeded Leigsirk 3-2, and prevailed over 6th-seeded Geneva in the semifinals, finishing 11-10 in overtime. And whereas the York Lacrosse Team concluded the final game against 1st-seeded Grayslake North by finishing in 2nd place overall. And whereas York defender Evan Mack earned All-West Suburban Conference First Team honors, Austin Kleibon was named an All-West Suburban Conference Second Team pick as an attacker, Pat Sheehan was an All-WSC Second Team pick as a midfielder, and Joe Lavacek and Tony Kuhn earned All-WSC Honorable Mention honors. And whereas the effort, dedication, and teamwork developed through the sport of lacrosse will have a lifelong influence on the members of the York High School 2012 team. And whereas the accomplishments of this team bring pride and prestige to York Community High School, to District 205, and to the community of Elmhurst, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 express congratulations to the team, their parents, Coach Don Canfield, and Assistant Coach Tom Coyne for these outstanding athletic achievements during the 2012 season. Very nice.
And to the guys. You want to come on? Here. You're going to have one of these, and then you just...
You've got to do the whole thing.
Thank you?
Sure.
There he is. I've got him. Well done. Good. All right, Coach.
Thank you very much for being here.
Coach. Coach.
Right. Normally, I declare a short break and encourage our students to go home and study, but it's the middle of the summer. The next on our agenda is public comments. I have four blue sheets for public comments. Gilbert Fisher, Dan Harrington, and forgive my pronunciation, Adriani Civeas, and I apologize for the mispronunciation, which I'm sure I made. So first, Mr. Fisher.
I don't know. I put gear on that thing, so I hope it's working.
Okay. Well, let me just run through the guidelines for you. We allow three minutes for public comment, and it is our policy not to comment on what is said at public comment, but it is our policy to listen.
I'm here tonight to ask for money. I'm asking for $1,000. You people again sent me house taxes that I cannot afford, so I'm asking for $1,000 from you fine ladies and gentlemen to help me pay my house taxes so I can stay in it another year. We moved into our house in 1986. By 1989, it was paid off in full. We owe no money on our house. We have two credit cards and the balances are zero. We owe no money on our credit cards, but I cannot afford the taxes on my house in the United States of America. I worked 37 and 1/2 years for the Lombard Post Office as a mailman, Route 18, walking house to house. I paid 11% of my salary for my retirement. I got the highest retirement salary they give, and I cannot afford the taxes on my house in Elmhurst, Illinois, because they're too high. My wife is 77 years old. She's not feeling well, and her last couple of weeks, she cleaned out two bedrooms. At supper tonight, she asked me to get a dumpster so we can start throwing away our 42, 45 years of marriage stuff. This is ridiculous. My house taxes in 2009 was up 5.6% over 2008. My taxes for 2010 were up 12% over 2009. My taxes this year, 2011, is up 4.8% over last year. I have no money to give you people. This is the United States of America, and it was designed and fought and built on. Taxation is not right. I have a house paid for, and my wife is old. I'm old, and we have to sell our house because you people keep raising the taxes? I thought there was a law you could not raise the taxes over 5% a year. Look at what you do. 5.6%. 12% last year. All I want is $1,000 from you people to help pay my taxes so I can stay in our house another year. What a country, the United States of America. That's a piece of shit that flag. And I'm a soldier, and I fought for this country, and I killed people for this country, and now I got to give up my house because I got to pay taxes? What a crock of shit.
Good evening. My name is Dan Harrington. I live at 575 West Second Street in Elmhurst. I have, I'm married with three kids, 2nd grader, 4th grader, 6th grader, so Hawthorne and Sandberg. I'd like to talk a little bit what the gentleman said. I'm a taxpayer, and I paid, this year I'll be paying $7,500 directly to District 205. I'm here to talk about facility usage fees. Later in the evening, the superintendent's going to discuss approval of facility usage fees. And all three of my kids swim for Elmhurst Swim Team. I'm here on their behalf primarily. However, my kids also play soccer, AYSO. They play basketball through the Y. They play baseball and softball. So we use a lot of the facilities that the Park District and the schools offer us. Athletic facilities serve an educational purpose or else they would not have been built. That is exactly, as you saw the lacrosse coach, congratulations to that team. That program is coming along because of the interest in the community as well as the interest in the School Board to talk to ISHA, IHSA, to get that as a real sport, not a club sport. Revenue neutrality is an admirable goal for the facility usages, but residents in District 205 should gain some benefits from these facilities as we are funding their construction and maintenance and use through our valuable tax dollars. There are various club teams that are the feeder system into the success of all York Athletic Teams. In reviewing what's proposed, I think that as long as constituent participants comprise 75% of more all participants of the club teams, they should be given a higher priority or a lower cost classification. For example, we've been moved from Group B to Group D. I think Group B or C would be more appropriate for a lot of these club teams as we, all of us that live in Elmhurst, pay a lot of the tax dollars. If club volunteers are, most of our parents and taxpayers of District 205 are willing to share in custodial or other duties outlined, a fee reduction or waiver should be given consideration. Or you could consider a deposit that will be fully refunded upon fulfillment of keeping the facilities clean. I just want to, you know, address, there was a couple of things that I looked at in the current fee schedule talking about the utility costs. Utility costs are done over all 13 buildings, 365 days a year for 24 hours. I think additional utility costs would not really incur whether the facilities are in use or not during the school year, except for lights. So what was used for a 2010 calculation early on did that. Thank you.
And again, I apologize for my mispronunciation.
My name is Adriani Cievelis. I'm, I live here in Elmhurst, 489 Mitchell. I have three daughters in middle school here in Elmhurst. I just wanted to talk about the usage fees that are going up. I fully believe in rate increases for outside users to bring revenue to our district. You know, I'm, by all means, education and, you know, everything we need for our students come first. However, I also believe that they should be fair and reasonable. The proposed fee I'm objecting to is for pool users. It's a lot higher than all the other usage fees. I think it singles out two club sports, water polo and swim team. They are the, pretty much, the main outside users of the pool that involve students, students that are part of District 205. We know that the pool was built a while back, paid for with tax dollars, and there was money set aside for maintenance of it. Somewhere along the line, maybe, you know, the money was used elsewhere for other maintenance, all again for District 205, and that's great. What I think now that it's fair that all user fees, everybody from all other clubs, should absorb costs for maintenance in all the facilities, not just a certain area. My kids not only swim, they play soccer, they play, you know, basketball. When you have a team and you have to set fees and standards, and they're so much higher for rentals, certain clubs cannot sustain themselves. So we're looking at losing a swim team, you know, that's a feeder program, to the high school. And, you know, I just don't think that's fair to the students or the community, especially when it was put there for the purpose of the community. So I just would like you to consider, reconsider the way the fees are set. A lot of what Mr. Harrington said, you know, sound reasonable, and, you know, just look into it a little bit more so we don't lose great clubs that actually use the pool. If they don't use it, I don't know who will. If, you know, we've been around for a long time, and if those fees are high for us, I don't know who could start anything new or better coming in there. So that's all. Thank you.
Next on our agenda is Superintendent's Communication.
First item is just a review of Freedom of Information Acts that we have received since the last Board meeting. We had six Freedom of Information requests. One was regarding the bid for the Lincoln School weatherproofing, one regarding our policies, another one regarding specific expenses related to the district, one regarding district vendors, our overall vendor list, and one was regarding contracts with colleges and universities on policies related to the placement of student teachers. Those are the six FO requests we received.
Second item.
Second item that I want to share with the Board tonight. You have in front of you this evening an outline, and I emphasize this is a draft for the Board to review, but it's a review of the Community Advisory Committee to be formed this fall. One of the things the Board had voiced was an opportunity to create greater input from the community and key stakeholders in the school district about our district operations, about our budget, about our efficiencies, about how this district is operated overall. And so one of the things that I have put together as a suggestion for the Board of Education is to, for a Community Advisory Committee to the Superintendent to be formed probably in October of this coming year. And really, the charge of the committee is really twofold. One is to review the operations of the district from a variety of perspectives. So an advisory committee would be selected. We would also open up spots for anyone who is interested in serving on the committee. We would then sit down and start outlining to those committee members each one of the areas that are listed under the review of the school district. And let me, I'll read those for the sake of the public. The areas that we would like to review with our key stakeholders are our district goals and direction, curriculum and instruction, facilities and operations, human resources, financial revenue and expenditures, and local, state, and national trends and perspective. I feel that in those categories, we can cover a good understanding of how this district operates, where the funding is going, what the staffing looks like, how curriculum and instruction is designed, what are the goals that we have, and hopefully, the members of this committee will come away with a pretty good understanding of district operations from a perspective of district-wide perception. Then, after that presentation, what I think would be important is that the committee would discuss and advise on a number of key areas going into next year. One would be a discussion of the goals, performance, and future direction of the district. As the Board knows, we have been dealing and finalizing district performance indicators. I think it would be a great opportunity for that committee to be resented with those district performance indicators, which are really going to become our report card for this district on our improvement efforts as a school district as we move forward into the future. Also, you know, give us an idea if we are on track for the future direction of the district. What do they think would be important to look at? What are the trends that are coming forward that they think the district should pay attention to? The second one would be an advise on opportunities for increased revenues and reduction in expenditures. Hopefully, this committee will have a good understanding of our expenditures and revenues, and they would have some ideas about how we could either increase our revenues, look at other revenue streams that could benefit the district, or have a discussion about what kind of reductions, if we have to face those in the future, what direction the committee and the community would like us to look at and consider as we move to the future. And then finally, improvement areas. As they review this data, what areas of improvement would they really think the district needs to pay attention to as far as programs and services for the students and the community? So it's really a vetting of our whole district and asking for input from people in the community, both parents and non-parents, businesspeople, key stakeholders in this community, so that the Board can be apprised of how this community feels about some of the direction we're going in. As I said, the committee makeup is listed there, parent representatives, staff members, community and business leaders. And I'm proposing, you know, it's an aggressive agenda, but I would suggest that the meetings begin in the first week in October. The committee would meet every other week, probably a two-hour meeting each night. I know we want to honor people's time. I don't want this to be such a burden for people that, you know, in my experience, people end up not coming to the committee meetings because they're running long. We would like to keep those within a reasonable timeline. But then get through this and have the opportunity for the committee itself to report back to the Superintendent and sharing that with the Board, probably in the January, one of the two January Board meetings coming up. So again, draft outline of what the committee structure may look like, and it's certainly open to discussion and suggestions from Board members.
Anyone? Ms. Hirsch?
Mr. Prunow, thank you for putting together the outline. I think it's a good idea. We, I think, as a Board, have stated several times that it's our desire that we have better engagement with community members and our stakeholders. I think this is a great vehicle, has a possibility to be a great vehicle to accomplish this. One observation and maybe one recommendation. Having served on district committees in past years before I actually came to this side of the table, we have a lot of people in the community who are willing to give of their time and share their expertise, and in order to make it most effective, we want to make sure that we listen carefully. As much as we want to share information, we also want to hear our community members' perspectives and take those lessons and make sure that we take those to heart. So I encourage, you know, active listening on both sides. The other thing is, I think it's a great perspective to include, if we can get them to commit to the time, business leaders, community leaders. In particular, I'm thinking of somebody, for example, from Elmhurst College, somebody who is accepting and looking for specific skills and levels of skills as our kids move on to the next level in their educational experience. It might be very interesting to hear what business leaders who are looking to employ our students, what skills they're looking for in particular, as well as, you know, from the college admissions standpoint. So that might be some interesting perspectives that we might not always hear directly.
Mrs. Eppner.
I just had a quick question. How will community members at large be chosen? What would be a tentative process for that?
One of the things that we would do is probably ask for a representative from every school within the district, a parent rep. Go from, starting there, and ask for a parent rep. Then I would look and say, if there are other parents who are interested, we would invite them on the committee just so there's an equal kind of distribution of parents across the district and not from just one school or one area. So that would be a criteria. Also, you know, I don't think you're going to get thousands lined up for doing this, and so I don't envision it as a huge problem of adding people to this committee. So, but I think, I think the other thing, as Maria said, I think we want to expand out, just not from parents. Now, some of the parents are having two hats. They can be someone from higher education and a parent. That'd be great. But I think we want it as a broad community committee and not just a parent committee, but community leaders, business leaders, higher ed, those kinds of people as part of that makeup. So we may have to do some recruitment to get people interested in doing that because it's, for some people, it's a little distant to get involved, especially if they don't have children in the school district, so.
Mrs. Steuben.
To that point, actually, one of three questions that I have is about the expertise of members on the committee. And how would you like to have funnel into you people that we may know from previous stints on, on, on district committees? For example, EPR. I know that we have expertise in the community that understands or, you know, who has, who has the experience, for example, a CFO of a Chicago school, you know, might be interesting or valuable to have that person, you know, be on the committee. So I guess I, what I'm trying to figure out is, how are you going to look at engaging different groups besides, like the PTA?
Well, I would rely, I think I said this a little bit before, I would rely on Board members who have connections with the community to do some recruitment on your own and get those people and then make those recommendations to us, and we can certainly then formalize and have a formal invitation. But, you know, you have people in the community that talk to you all the time. You know what those resources are.
I know that we have expertise in the community that understands, or, you know, who has the experience, for example, a CFO of a Chicago school, you know, might be interesting or valuable to have that person, you know, be on the committee. So, I guess, what I'm trying to figure out is, how are you going to look at engaging different groups besides, like the PTA?
Well, I would rely, I think I said this a little bit before, I would rely on board members who have connections with the community to do some recruitment on your own and get those people and then make those recommendations to us, and we can certainly then formalize and have a formal invitation. But, you know, you have people in the community that talk to you all the time, you know what those resources are. I think you're the great resource to do that recruitment.
Okay. So, we can look at people that we know as well as people that are from the previous task forces, for example, that we've had in this district before, because then they have the background and the history, and we're not reeducating as well. Okay. So, another question is about communications with the board. I know that you had said at the end game, we would be communicated in January. Are there key points during this process that you think that the committee would be sharing information with the board, or you would be doing that?
You know, it's hard for me to say, Karen, until we get the process going and see, you know, kind of the will of the committee, too. In my experience in the past, sometimes the committees come together and have some ideas about how they want to report or how they want to take next steps. We certainly want to honor that from the committee. So, it's kind of an engagement process that you work through, and you want to be as flexible as possible to meet the needs of the committee and the needs of the district and some of the info, some of the information and some of the advice that we're looking for.
Okay. So, I guess that would lead to my last question, which is the outcome. And my take is that it's going to be some implementation plan, if you will. I mean, you know, the concerns and the ideas would be vetted and validated, and there would really be a plan for whatever it happens to be that comes out of this committee that's implemented.
No, I'm not sure that's true.
Okay.
I think this committee is an advisory committee of the Board of Education. I'm not sure this is a committee unless the board feels you want the committee to have specific recommendations that the board is going to honor out of that committee. In my experience, it's an advisory committee that gives you lots of suggestions, has some recommendations that they want the board to consider, but I think the board ultimately is the decision-making body of the school district, and I think you want to retain that, because you also have a different perspective. There may be recommendations that come forward that as a board, you would have trouble even implementing or supporting because of some other reasons. I'm not sure you want to receive an implementation plan that you're going to have to adopt as a board.
I'm sorry. So, I guess I'm, yeah, I'm not, I'm thinking the end game, right? So, you've got these ideas that come out, just, I'm thinking about my experience on EPRT. And then that information comes in and the recommendations that we agree to or massage or validate ultimately come to a district plan, right? I mean, you know, you listen to some of them, if it's valid, you put together a plan to implement. I guess I'm going beyond, you know, this committee and saying, okay, what the ultimate goal is. We get this advice, we say how it fits in with our district goals that we're setting now and our DPIs, and maybe it gets encapsulated into our strategic plan? I don't know. I'm just trying to get a sense of, so the recommendations come in, and then what?
Again, I think the board then takes that information and then creates advisory, you will tell the administration, what direction do you want us to go? You know, if it's budget cuts, for example, and you get the input from the advisory committee, that will form your recommendation to the administration about what direction you want us to go for that particular issue. Or if there's a recommendation of restructuring the schools, for example, then that's something that the board discusses, has merit, then you direct the administration to start looking at implementation of that. So, that's how, that's how I view the advisory board role in this.
Okay.
But again, I'm open to other ideas, but that's how I envision this working.
When you brought this up in committee, I was really excited about the idea, because it seemed like a way to bring in a lot of new ideas and innovation, and that's the positive side of it. When I opened up the document in preparation for the meeting and saw the broad jurisdiction or the broad assignment, I kind of started thinking that with such a broad assignment, an unelected group might exert a little more power than ultimately than was intended. I think the intention is to bring more people in and more ideas. I know that's what the intention is. But my concern is, you know, with invitations, will this group be holding public sessions? I know when you said, when you brought this up, you said that their schedule might be a little tight, and I don't know if there's time for that. But I'm just wondering, would they be allowing people to come in and comment who aren't necessarily on the committee? I mean, how does this broaden the scope instead of narrowing it, is what I'm most interested in?
Well, it's not, it's not going to function as a public body, John. So, I don't think there's an expectation that there's going to be public comment or public input. I think the committee is selected or chooses to join, and then the committee has this kind of process to work through with the ultimate goal of coming up with some kind of advisory report to the superintendent of the Board of Education. So, I'm, you know, and again, I would want to hear from committee members about that, but I think you don't want to divert the committee into all of a sudden going into side roads that really isn't the intention of the charge of the committee. I can see that after this is done, you may have recommendations from the advisory committee to form other committees to look at specific issues that need more information or need more attention than this committee is going to have time to do. I can very well see that. But that's an outflow of this committee overall to say, boy, we think you need another advisory committee on this issue coming forward, whatever that is, and that's a recommendation of the Board of Education that the superintendent should form another committee on this issue.
That, will this group, that'd be, staff will attend their sessions and provide, I guess, the information, I mean?
Correct. Yes. See, one of the things I think is important for this committee is, in committees in the past, if you don't start out with a good understanding of the whole district and what our limitations are sometimes, you can frustrate committee members, because you ask them to come up with ideas, and then because of either state law or because of some kind of mandate or something else, those ideas don't even work. And I think they need to have a good understanding of how a school district operates, what are our limitations, how do we operate under that? That's not to say they can challenge us and say, well, why don't you do it some other way? But I think there's a better understanding first of having an idea of how the district operates, how finances work, how that translates into staffing and curriculum and all of that. Then hopefully, that's the education part for the committee, and then they're pretty knowledgeable going forward, and then having meaningful discussions about, well, why does it have to be done this way? Or have you thought of this piece, and maybe you want to have a committee formed to really investigate this kind of curriculum that may be in the future that we want to look at as a community?
How big do you think this will be? I'm sorry, was that in the report?
No, it wasn't. You know, I think it depends on, again, the Board of Education and community members' interest and how many people we get to recruit. I think it could be a pretty significant committee. I think depending on, again, the interest in the community members and business leaders and in honor of their time, too. You know, it's a big commitment for anybody to commit to once every other week for an extended period of time in the fall going into December of this year.
I just want to make sure it's big enough so that this invitation only doesn't become exclusive.
But again, you open up at large also. It's at large, but by invitation.
I do support it, I'm just trying to look for some unintended consequences that happen, having seen some outside citizens committees work one direction, and other ones, like the one that I think gave rise to the 2006 referendum, was very successful bringing in of other ideas and other solutions that ultimately gave some validity to that initiative, so.
I do have one question about it. You list six different topics on here. Do you envision subcommittees from this committee or everything done as committee or the whole?
I think in that part, that would have to be a committee of the whole, because I think you want all the community members who's ever on this committee to be up to speed on all of those issues. I certainly think you could subcommittee after that some of the ideas, if that's the committee direction, to say, you know what, why don't you investigate this? But I think then you still have to bring the whole group back together and come to consensus on what those recommendations are.
Mrs. Hirsch.
If I can detect a little bit of a trend here, this is really just an initial investment that we're making in educating some of our key community members and getting them up to speed in a relatively short amount of time. But we do have a large number of constituents who are ready, are invested in our schools and in our processes. I think we've had an example through PTA Council, all of our PTA presidents in the district and the PTA Executive Council have established relationships. I know with you, Dave, and you've had meetings and briefings, and we've had our administrators through the PTA Council. I think this is just another extension in terms of getting a core set of people who are invested in our school system, to get them up to speed. And then I'm assuming that while they might give a report to the board in January, they're invested in our schools and they would be willing to serve as sounding boards and, you know, into the future, based on either their areas of interest or, you know, it might be something they're done in January, they've learned a ton, they can give some initial ideas. But I'm assuming that the people who would be willing to spend this much time over this six-month period of time would be willing to continue to give and advise and give us some feedback. At least, that's what I think we're hoping to gain from this engagement effort, right?
Yeah, as long as we don't burn them out.
As long as we don't burn them out. This is initial, an initial, get them up to speed and give them enough information to be able to give us informed guidance. I like it.
So, with your goal of not burning people out, these committee meetings won't be lasting as long as Board of Education meetings? Is that what you're saying?
I would say not as long as Board committee meetings. Any other discussion?
All right.
Hearing none. Let's move on. Next is approval of board meeting minutes. I, sorry about that, I turned it off when I thought I was turning it on. Are there any changes? This next is to approve the board meeting minutes for June 12th, June 19th, June 26th, and July 9th, 2012. Are there any changes to any of those minutes? Hearing none. We approve those minutes as submitted. The next item on our agenda is board committee reports. The only committee that's met since has been the Finance and Operations Committee, so let me turn this over to Mr. Bloom.
Thank you. I'm not sure how we got to have all the fun in the interim, but what we're going to do tonight, I think as you saw in board docs as posted, is kind of have a mini finance committee meeting in a lot shorter time than we usually have a finance committee meeting. But the purpose of the committees, as we've talked about, is to distill up and summarize. So, you know, I think we're going to go through the items in the update. Dave's going to talk a little bit about some of this. I'll go through it and give you guys an opportunity to ask questions. So, let's see. I have facility use fee will be covered on a separate agenda item, so we'll get to that. We talked about budget, financial calendar, and timeline. I think one of the key pieces of that was what Dave just talked to, the Citizens Advisory Committee, talking about how do we provide more time for decision-making and more input as we do it. And we will be kicking off that process, I think, at the upcoming finance committee meeting later this week. But again, Dave's Citizens Advisory Committee is one of the, one of the, kind of the cornerstone of getting feedback and pivoting over what we've done last year. On to the list here. Long-term facility planning process. Within the discussion, we talked about the need to develop, I think what we call the Facilities at a Glance publication, similar to the Budget at a Glance, but which starts to, in one place, talk about, you know, the buildings, the characteristics of the buildings, things like enrollment, key maintenance items, replacement, age, things like that, to start getting our arms around the long-term facilities needs. And so, I think we've been talking about this for a while. I think this Facilities at a Glance document is something that we're looking toward to coalesce this stuff, to anchor a discussion about our longer-term facilities plan. This is a documentation at current state. Let's see, what's next? TIF update. TIF is a full board issue, so I think we're going to, I'll cover that in board communications just to stay true to the fact that we're doing this as a board and not as a committee. Park District use of facilities. I'll let Dave give the update on that.
Yeah, just, we are trying to look at all intergovernmental units as ways that we can be more efficient and share some of the responsibility for some of our functions. And one of the discussions that's come up is with the Park District, and we have just had initial conversations with the Park District about how they could help us with our outside facility needs, our outside facility use. They are the experts on outside recreational facilities, and it seems counterintuitive that we would be doing our own thing when we have a Park District that really has a very good reputation on how they operate and use our facilities. So, and their facilities with our outside facilities. So, the idea is, are there opportunities to partner more with the Park District? We already have a strong partnership with the Park District. But expanding that intergovernmental agreement so that there is more involvement on the Park District on the use of our outside facilities, and then opportunities for us to assist them with their educational needs or their inside facility needs, whatever it is. And so, it's just an initial discussion, but we had a couple of meetings that I thought were very fruitful. The Park District now is evaluating what a shared agreement like that might, in concept, look like. We're going to schedule another meeting and talk about that in more depth as we get more and more content of what this may look like. So, just wanted the board to know, that was an initial discussion we had with the Finance Committee, and so that process is kind of moving forward with the Park District.
Okay. Thanks, Dave. The next item we covered in the meeting was a budget update from Springfield. Chris Walton had pulled together a spreadsheet, I think it was included and posted on the board docs, about the impact on our district, projected impact on our district of some of the recent cuts that the state has made in their budget. I don't know if we want to, can we throw that up, or do we want to?
I was told we didn't need to. Have you presented anything?
All right.
Well, let me, I can go through a summary and then...
Yeah, if you could go through a summary, it's posted on board docs. It's not pretty, but Dave can talk through it.
Yeah, let me, let me just start. This is just a summary. The document in front of you is the actual financial details of what state funding is looking like right now. So, let me go through that. Let me start with general state aid. The foundation level has been maintained at $6,119 per pupil. However, the general-based revenue is based on a 95% proration on that number for this past year. So, we did not receive $6,119. We received 95% of that. In 2013, it appears we will have 89% proration of that figure. So, that results in a decrease to our district of about $163,000 that we will not realize from the state for general education support.
I just want to clarify, Dave, we don't actually receive 95% of the $6,119 number. Our number is significantly lower, right? I just want it to be clear.
Yeah, you're right.
That it's based on our property taxes. We do not receive the full, that's the state starting point.
State-level starting point, yes.
And then it goes down from there based on our property tax sources.
But we will get an 89% proration, and that will equal $163,000 less in general state aid. Second item is mandated carotid oracles. Right now, they are being maintained at the same levels. However, the delinquent payments that are still old to school districts are still a question mark. We started the year two quarters behind in those payments. End of the year, we're still two quarters behind. We received four payments this year. So, we received the four payments we were due. There are still two payments, delinquent. There is no, I have no information about... There is no, I have no information about whether those delinquent payments are going to made up in this coming school year or not. So the state is still too, too behind. The only exception to that this year was special education personnel categorical. We received five quarterly payments this year. So they made up one of the payments this year to special ed personnel. They are still one quarter behind, but we did receive five this year. And that reimburses us for special education personnel costs. Early childhood was reduced by 7.7%. That translated to our district of about $14,600. And arts and foreign language, that's still out. We don't know what that reduction's going to be, if at all. Bilingual, we maintain the same level. That was not a reduction. We had heard that was going to be a reduction. That did not turn out. Vocational ed, there was a tiny increase, but basically the same level. National Board certification, state maintained the same level on that. Driver's education did take a decrease by 27.8%, and that translated in $29,000 reduction for Elmhurst School District. And then we do receive a library grant, and that did stay the same. So that, that was the overall reductions and maintain on the state aid formula for Elmhurst for this coming school year.
So any questions on that? So...
Mr. McDonough?
So basically, the only reduction that we will use as a basis for forming the budget in the next year is approximately $300,000, half of which comes from the general state aid. Is that right? Is that about right?
Yes.
Oh, God. That's it.
All right.
Can you, and I know Mr. Walton couldn't join us tonight.
Could you, Dave, do you know, I know the budget, I think the state budget has passed, ISB has allocated funds, that's what we're basing this off of. So we're at the point now where we're fairly confident in these numbers? Or they're, this is obviously outside of discussions around pension, okay? But I'm just saying, in terms of our state revenue, we're feeling pretty confident that Governor Quinn gave, you know, these numbers, ISB has these numbers, and we're pretty set on, there should be little variability in these numbers.
No, this is the past budget that, as it stands right now. I don't see that changing. Again, given the caveat that there's still pension reform out there, that could still occur. But these are the numbers based on state aid that we can depend on from Springfield.
I mean, we're always, there's always things that are floating. So this one, we can put a pin in. And we're relatively confident that these are the numbers that we are going to move forward with. Pension's still outstanding from the state and property taxes.
Yeah, and I, I think for budgeting purposes here, and could the state delay another, I mean, they could just not pay us. I mean, there's all kinds of...
Is much not...
Right. This was drawing the line forward from last year and looking at what it would mean. So, you know, it's, not to belittle $300, but it's $327,000, which is, which is meaningful in the terms of that's almost another teacher. So I, we tend to, we tend to measure things in terms of how many teachers, I think, when we look at budget, and it's material for us. May monthly financial report. I think later, there's some June financial information up. The document that's posted is the main document that, you know, that I think we look at as a summary of how we're doing within the Finance Committee, and I wanted to put that out there for, for everybody here. It's, it's a comparison of this year versus last year. I think the red line is, is expenses. The, correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, I'm trying to read here. The, the black line is revenues, and as you can see, it's, it's tracking according to plan, and I think we're going to come in slightly better than planned. But I think the point that we took away from this in committee to report to the Board is, is that, is that we're meeting expectations as it pertains to budget.
Yeah, I think from the public's perspective, too, there's been a lot of discussion about how much fund equity school districts in the state of Illinois are carrying over. And I think this is a great graph to show what that means. If you look at our September, we had $57 million in fund equity. But as you see, because of the delay in state aid payments and because of the timing of state aid and the collection of taxes, what you see is that's the high point in our fund equity. And if you look at May now, that, just before we closed our books, our fund equity was down to $7 million. Now, that's still within the range of what the Board wants for that fund equity. But I, I just want to show that depending on where you take a snapshot on, on the health of those districts, that could be, be a very misleading number compared to what the actual function is of that budget. So you go, again, from a high of $57 million to a low of $7 million by May. And then, of course, in June, we can expect the tax collection, then that will go back up again. And as Chris said, we had, our revenues came in slightly ahead of our budget predictions for this year, and our expenditures came in slightly less than we had budgeted. So that, that netted us a more positive outlook for the end of the year than we had originally budgeted. But not by, I mean, by less than 2%. So the budget was, the good news is the budget prediction was right on target.
Any questions on that?
Mr. McDonough?
Just a procedural thing. Is there a way to have, this very helpful thing, and I hope people who are watching the tape at home can click over to the agenda and open these things that we're discussing here. I think it'd be really helpful to have these things on the screen if we can do that. Dave is asking a lot.
Next month.
Yeah, my apologies. Next month, I'll give more heads up.
No, no, I think this is an improvement. We usually sit here and we read, or we hear from the chairman reading a recitation of what was discussed. And these are the sort of things that we can, you know, if we can bring them out, we can tell this story, and it is a compelling story.
No, I'll take responsibility for that. That was not David. We just didn't, I didn't, I failed to tell David that we probably should post these up on the Board tonight, so...
This is getting better. And each, with each improvement, it gets better. And hopefully, we can get these things on the screen in the future, and I think it really helps us tell the story a lot better, especially this graph. This is, this is, this is a good one.
We look forward to those in the August meeting.
Just the last one that, that Chris wanted us to cover tonight is demographic enrollment. We had talked about going out and securing a new study on demographics enrollment projections. As we started looking at the data that we had, what we discovered was CASADA, who we had secured to do the study a number of years ago, I think it was four or five years ago, had continued the study on beyond this present year. What they didn't do is they didn't get into the real specifics, especially at the elementary level, about variations between individual elementary school district, school buildings. But overall, we have a pretty good idea. And, and what you have tonight is what our actual enrollment was for this past year and what the CASADA study said from Series B, which is the, the one that's in the middle. There's one that's very conservative, there's one that's in the middle, and there's one very aggressive that would say, well, if you get a big enrollment jump, this is what it may look like. And you can see that, that difference is pretty minor. It's a 0.53% from what our actual enrollment was. So that, given that confidential, confidence level, we came back and said, you know, we really, since we have this study that gives us overall district enrollment numbers, and that's really what we're looking for at a district level, schools vary quite a bit, but overall, what we're looking for is what our enrollment's going to look like on a year-to-year basis. We don't feel there's a need to go out and, and spend funding on another study. We are very comfortable with the CASADA for the next two or three years. I think it gives us the information we're looking for. And so at one point at the Board level, we had talked about a new study. The recommendation from the administration right now is to not engage in a new study on enrollment. We'll continue with the data we have for the next couple of years and then take another look at it.
Mrs. Hirsch?
I'm glad to hear that recommendation. I was involved a long time ago on facilities, looking at our facilities and what our enrollment projections were going to be. So I worked with the CASADA data really closely. And for years, their overall number for our school district has been right on. But the difference, the difference was in the elementary buildings. We could not accurately predict, and it threw all of the work off. So I think this is the right course of action, not to spend money on another enrollment study. I think the data that we have is sufficient for what we need, and we'll just have to be flexible in our planning as enrollment shift from area, you know, elementary attendance area to elementary attendance area. I think it's the right move.
Mr. Bloom?
I had one more item on the agenda. Did you have...
Let's just make sure that we've discussed this one. Anyone else? I do have one quick question about this CASADA study. I mean, in, yes, as to reiterate, Mrs. Hirsch's comments, yeah, within a half a percent, basically, of their projections is where we're at. However, on a school-to-school level, the variance is quite large. Madison, he underpredicted by 41% this last year, and Edison overpredicted by 13%. Is there a CASADA option, or is it just statistically impossible to have any more granular predictions than this?
I would have to go back to CASADA and ask whether they want to come back and do further study and add to that. I think the wild card is always going to be Madison. Just by the nature of the Madison Early Childhood Center, that's a fluctuating population that's going to be hard to get a handle on, I believe. But we could go back and ask CASADA if they wanted to, you know, what would that cost us to do that kind of study?
And would that be of any benefit to us?
From my perspective, I really don't think so. I think what, from a district planning perspective, what you want to look at is what's the trends overall in the district? And then, you know, make sure we're prepared for that. But the only reason you could get into elementary is if you were going to start looking at some kind of redistricting process. I don't see that on the horizon right now. So besides Madison, and maybe there's something we can do internal with Madison, the other ones, while they vary, they don't vary wildly, and I think that's a pretty good prediction on the building capacities.
Okay. Then, then if there's no benefit to it, let's not, let's not ask. Mrs. D'Aroni?
I just wanted to add that when we first did this study, very beginning, and then we had it redone, CASADA said to us, I'm going to be pretty much right on target on my Class B number for the overall district, but I cannot predict the elementary schools as well. And he, he told us not to rely on those numbers in the same way that we would rely on the overall district number. Now, whether their methods have improved, I don't know, but that's what he told us at the time, that, that the big predictor that he would stand behind was the overall, the one that we're a half a percent off of, rather than the individual neighborhood schools.
Okay. Mrs. Stifson?
So basically, Dave, you're saying that there's, there's two pieces when you look at CASADA, or enrollment. And that is your people, resources allocation, and the facilities. So you're saying that you can, based on how CASADA has been relatively on target for us, we, we can work our people, employee resources. And you also feel confident that our facilities are going to be able to accommodate what they've been saying?
Yeah, based on this data, yeah. I think it's data we use, we look to the future, look over the next two or three years. But I think, given the overall record here that I see, a half a percent difference in the predictions, I'm pretty confident that's pretty good, a document to start doing budget assumptions, staffing assumptions, facility assumptions going into the future.
Mr. Bloom?
And I think, you know, for purposes of budget, absolutely. And I think that one of the, one of the ways to address this, too, is to start thinking about it in ranges. So, I mean, CASADA's got their A, B, and C. I think that when we look at projections, I mean, there are ways to get at maybe our own predictions by building if we have to, but because it's used in a general budget, and if we had to move somebody here versus somebody there, it's not going to impact the outcome. And we're trying to get as directionally, you know, is it black or is it a red number? When we get into facilities planning, you know, long-term facilities plan, we may, you know, we may want to look at this a little harder. I'm not sure yet. I mean, that's, that's a process that we're just beginning, but, you know, if we're talking about any kind of capital spending on facilities, we would want to sharpen the pencil a little bit, whether we can do that in-house or would need to update. That's a future discussion and not in the near term.
Anyone else? I have one more thing. And I was not around when this study was originally done, but my understanding is that one criticism of the study was that it didn't predict very well kindergarten enrollment or kindergarten entrance. Is that something that we can offer, you know, I don't know, some kind of incentive for parents to pre-enroll their children, you know, two, three years in advance? Would that, would that help us in our planning? Or is that, do you think that's just a kind of a garbage?
Well, it, it might be somewhat worthwhile. The only thing is, parents' plans change two or three years out, especially with little children. I think people get more stable with older children, and they don't want to switch schools. At that age, I think they're willing to move around. So I'm not sure what the prediction rate would be on a three-years-out to say, well, I got my two-year-old, I'm in the district, they're going to enroll, and then how many would actually be here three years later? I don't know.
I think, having CASADA tried to predict Madison numbers, we're talking about children who start receiving services on their third birthday. Those children haven't been born yet, so we really can't project out six years...
The other piece about Madison is Susan and I have been working a lot more closely with Illinois Early Intervention, which is where we get most of the kids. It's the State Birth to Three program. So we already know, I mean, it's not five years out because they haven't been born yet, but we do know a year ahead of time. And as a result, Chris has already budgeted for the fact that we're probably going to be opening a classroom in December because of our population increase.
Right. And then in terms of kindergarten, I think two years ago, our kindergarten numbers were not as solid. We didn't get that information as early. I know the administration has done a lot of work to try to get the kindergarten enrollment and, you know, promoting that event, getting kindergarten roundup. And I think we've done much better, especially at Fisher, that had, had a lot of variation, a lot of last-minute registrations. And I think they've done a lot of work to try to eliminate some of that variability at kindergarten. So I think CASADA wasn't always often, didn't understand how many families kept their kids in full-day kindergarten. I think there were some nuances that were local to us that he didn't necessarily accommodate for.
Is, is planning for kindergarten enrollment an issue, or we're pretty good with it?
I think kindergarten enrollment is always an issue for any district, but I have not seen, and I've only been here this past year, but I don't see wild variations. The one would probably be Fisher. And we did some things this year at Fisher. All of the registration material online is now bilingual for that population. And so we've set that up. We've changed some of the, the forms and the dynamics, thanks to Dave Smith and the tech department. I think it's a much more user-friendly document. And I think we're getting a better, we're getting people enrolling early and better understand the enrollment process within the district than we have in the past. So I think it's easier for parents to register and enroll. It's still a lengthy process, but it's still, I think, more user-friendly than it has been.
Okay. Mr. McDonough?
I don't know if this is, well, it's intuitive, so I'm just going to say it. I'm just wondering if there's any ability to track building permits, residential building permits in the city? And that's how CASADA got their, their number.
That's how CASADA, they look at birth rate, they look...
It'd be interesting to see, I mean, we went through this, or we're still in this recession, in which new housing starts in town really dropped off considerably. And so there was an event, you know, historic event that occurred that happened before these numbers hit their mark. And I'm just wondering if there's some way to account for that by kind of comparing historically building permits and enrollment? Is there a connection?
Again, though, if you rely on CASADA, that's predicted in here. So I don't know why we would capture that data ourselves unless we want to vary from the CASADA recommendation. We think there's a factor there that wasn't in here on housing starts that was being considered, and I don't know that.
All right. Then moving on.
The last item in committee we talked about, and this is just reporting out, is that we looked at, we looked at our insurance reserves. That's been a topic of discussion in the past. I think we've had, I think the point Dave made was a few good claim years and built up some reserves. We are currently in the process of doing a deeper dive analysis on the fund balance to determine the amount, if any, of excess reserves that are there. I think we had talked about this earlier, I think Susan, I was in agreement with you, that we need a little more comfort for those outlier years. And so we have asked for more data regarding any claims over $100,000. And so, we have asked for more data regarding any claims over $100,000 over the last 10 years, which is, you know, underneath our cap. But, so, the point being that what we're going to try to do is arrive at a reasonable reserve level that gives us, you know, plenty of cushions so that we all sleep at night and determine if there's any excess reserves. If there should be, that we're looking at potentially proposing, I think, or the administration's looking at proposing a potential premium holiday, which would be a benefit to District 205 and our portion of the contribution, but also a benefit to our employees and their contribution holiday for a month. One-month holiday would save the district 700, plus or minus $700,000. So, we're, we're trying to look at these, you know, creative ways to, you know, come up with $327,000. At this stage, it's not going to give us, you know, a number of the other things that are going on. But the point, the point to report out here is that the analysis is underway. There's, there's, you know, no recommendation yet. We don't know if there is any. We're hopeful that there is, but we will report back when, when we have the data. So, that was, that was finance committee.
Okay. Any questions before we move on? All right. Then, moving on. The superintendent's consent agenda. Any items to remove? No? Do I hear a motion? Mr. McDonough?
I'd like to remove D.
Okay. Then, do I hear a motion? Go ahead.
I move that we approve the superintendent's consent agenda, less item D, approval bid number 12-09 cafeteria donuts and pastries.
Okay.
Second?
Moved by Mrs. Hirsch, seconded by Mrs. D'Arone. Any discussion? All right. And Mrs. Walsh, may I ask you to call the roll, please?
Ms. Hirsch?
Yes.
Mrs. D'Arone?
Yes.
Ms. Ebner?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes. Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carries. And then, on item D.
I'm going to have to recuse myself from consideration and voting on this bid number 1209 cafeteria donuts and pastries because of a personal relationship of many years with one of the owners of Clyde's Delicious Donuts. So, I'd ask to be excused for a second.
And do I hear a motion for item D?
I move that the Board of Education approve bid number 12-09 cafeteria donuts and pastries from Clyde's Delicious Donuts. Second?
Moved by Mrs. Hirsch, seconded by Mrs. D'Arone. Any discussion?
I don't know Clyde. I don't know Clyde either, but these donuts are delicious.
Don't know Clyde, never had a donut, so, believe it or not. Well, never had a Clyde's donut, okay? Full disclosure.
Right.
Clearly, there's been a lot of donuts going through here. Then, Mrs. Walsh, may I ask you to call a roll, please?
Ms. Hirsch?
Yes.
Mrs. D'Arone?
Yes.
Ms. Stufan?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough is abstaining. Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
And Mr. Collins?
Yes. So, six ayes, no nays, one abstention, or one recusal, I should say. Motion carries. The next is the, and Mr. McDonough rejoining us. The next item, then, is the superintendent's agenda. The first is approval of facility usage fees. Do I hear a motion? Mrs. Hirsch?
I move that the Board of Education approve the facility usage fees as outlined in the Facility Rental Usage Agreement.
Second, or moved by Mrs. Hirsch, seconded by Mrs. Ebner. Any discussion, please? Mr. Bloom?
I, I just want to throw out there that this has been a difficult discussion with the community. We've had a couple of meetings to talk about, about the facilities fees. It's not a decision that's taken lightly by us, and we understand that it has a significant impact on, on many families in the Elmhurst community and many of the District 205 kids. The issue is, is our cost. And this isn't, and we endeavor to undertake a study of our incremental costs, so it's over and above what it costs to, you know, to keep the facility running if nobody's in there. This is just the incremental cost that it takes for us to staff and for us to run the building when someone else is in there. And the, the issue is, is, you know, we've laid off teachers the last few years. We have significant fees that we're charging our kids, and this amounts to a subsidy and, you know, for, for one group over another group of users. And we're trying to direct as much of our resources as possible into the classroom, and this is just something that we have to address. I think, Jim, you've got the number, we haven't touched fees in years. I think there was a raise recently, but before that, it wasn't.
Two years ago, we raised fees, and my understanding is, the previous time that fees had been looked at was 1982.
And the raise was material, but not anywhere close to what would have caught you up to inflation if you'd have been raising the fees since then. We've had community meetings. We've pledged to continue the community discussion. We've invited the groups that are significantly impacted, anybody that wants to come in and talk to us about their budget. You know, there've been some misunderstanding, I think, about how to apply this new fee structure to the budget, where we've done some calculations for some groups that have been a little bit different than other groups. I'm not discounting the fact that it's material, but, you know, we've put that offer out there. And also, we want to continue the discussion on areas where we may be able to save money. And where we can save money, we pass that through, because again, these are, we save costs, you save, you know, the users, our customers save costs, too. So, you know, we have to implement this, given our budget situation, but it's not the end of the discussion. So, I just want to make sure this is part of our process, and it's, and it's not something that was easy to do, but, but it's something that's necessary.
Mrs. Hirsch?
I do think this is the right thing to do. We are, we need to spend education dollars on education. That's what we've been asked to do. That's what we've been, that's our task. The one thing that I would ask is that we set these fees for this upcoming school year. And I would just ask that we have a proposal, a revised proposal maybe brought forward next year, if there are some unintended consequences, some things that we didn't anticipate. We're not trying to, to make it incredibly difficult for anybody. We just need to recoup our costs. So, if there are some things, I'm open to next year. I don't want to spend a ton of the board's time or a ton of the administrator's time on, on this particular piece. This is a very tiny part of our budget, although I recognize to some of these organizations, it feels like a very large part of their budget. But I would just like to ask the administration if we can get a, a report back at the end of the, or come, you know, close to the conclusion of a school year. You know, we were pretty much right on. We cover our costs. That's what we were looking to do. That would, that would be really appreciated.
Mr. Bloom?
And I think that's a great point, Mrs. Hirsch. We, that's why these discussions are going to be ongoing. I think we're going to have them more frequently. I think that, you know, despite the best intentions, there's a law of unintended consequences. I mean, it's our desire to react to those quickly. I don't think, our desire is to wait a year or two. If we see something that is materially different than what we predicted or wanted, I think we want to continue that discussion around that. And then, absolutely tracking whether what we've done has actually achieved the objective that we set out to do. So, I think that's a, that's a great point, that this, this is going to be some flexibility to, this isn't just dictated, and it's going to be in place, and we're not going to talk to anybody for a year and figure this out later, so.
Mrs. D'Arone?
I really appreciate the process that you, Chris, primarily went through, getting this all together, holding the community meetings, and, and really listening. I mean, this is, this is the third or fourth iteration of what has come back, based on what the community has told us. And of course, not everyone is happy. That's always the case. And, but the promise to continue the conversation, I think, is the right way to go.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yeah. Mr. Bloom, I was wondering about the customer service. We, we are recouping our costs. It's a large increase for some groups. Have we addressed increasing our customer service with the system? You know, with some of the problems and some of the discussions with the community is, they have to pay more. So, will, will the system be more efficient with reserving and, and some of the customer service side of things?
And those are absolutely items that we've committed to, to continue and address. I think that going into the new school year, this, the, the fee section moved to the forefront in order to get this in place. You know, I think our desire was to have maybe a little longer timeline on it, but given the budget difficulties we have, and given the fact that the reservation window, we've already delayed. So, we, we've put the fee structure in place. The conversations are, you know, I, I think we'd like, we're, we're in the process of scheduling a meeting after the school year starts, so the reservation system is open. People have gone through it. The fee schedule has been implemented. We've been living under it for maybe a month or so. Let's get everybody together, want to talk about, you know, what, what the impact is and how it's going. But then, to start exactly on those issues, on reservations and blocking, and some of the other things that we heard from that first community discussion that we had, those are absolutely still on the list. They just happened from a prioritization standpoint to get, to get moved down till after we could get the financial stuff on. So, that's coming.
I just want to be very careful. I don't want to set an unrealistic level of customer service. These are taxpayer-owned facilities that we are working very hard to make available to taxpayers, but I don't want to set the administrative central office, you know, I, I just want to be very careful that we are not setting an expectation level in terms of customer service. Their primary focus is the day-to-day operations of the school district. And while we want to give them the best experience that we can and be fair, I just want to be very careful that we're not touching staff time to make the experience what they would get from a for-profit company providing facility services. So, I, I understand that it's a very fine line, and we need to be very careful to make sure that our staff is focused on what their day-to-day mission is. We're already staffed very, very thin in the central office, and we need to make sure that we are meeting our primary obligation. So, I appreciate the customer service, but it, it is a balance, that we need to make sure that we're focused on our mission.
Mr. Bloom?
And I'll respond to that, too, in that, you know, customer service, you know, I think, I'm trying to say this right. We've done things without necessarily putting as much thought as I think we could into them. And so, I think it's around, you know, when we talk about, when we're charging a full fee like this, you know, block reserving our facilities and leaving them empty by a group that may or may not use them, I think we need to take a sharper pencil at spending some time with the folks that are using these internally and making sure that they free up the spaces when, when they don't need them. You know, one of the teams makes the playoffs, yes, we're going to have to kick one of our, you know, our customers out of the gym, but, you know, just blanket, I mean, that's an example. But the, the point being is, is that we, being user-friendly, it does not necessarily require spending more money. You know, I think that what we want to hear is, you know, from the community and from the advisory group that we have on our user side, is, is, you know, how do we make the scheduling easier? We have a system, you know, automated in place, so hopefully that, you know, continues to work for us. And, you know, how does some of the policies around how stuff is reserved, when it's released, maybe, you know, how we, we look at cancellations and incentives to make sure that you cancel early so that it frees it up? Things that don't cost money, but that just require people to work smarter. And so, I, I think that we do owe an obligation, when we're charging these kinds of fees to these folks, to be smart about what we do. And I hear you, it's not about spending money or time doing it, but, but we can't, we can't, I mean, I think we had kind of a dictatorial approach to things in the past, and I don't think that flies.
Mrs. Stufan?
And really, to that point, whether we call it customer service, whether we call it communication, I think it's important, and I, and you highlighted it, Chris, is that you're going to do touchbates. You first off met with all the groups several times, to Susan's point, and got their feedback and adjusted the facility fees. And they may have to be adjusted again, and that will be done based on, once this is implemented, then you touchbase with the same, you know, people that you were originally talking to. And periodically, we do that. And so, there is, you know, if you will, kind of a formal feedback loop, where people can provide us feedback. And I think that's what we mean when we say customer service, or that's what I, I think the community is looking for, is, you know, respect of the information of their, their customer experience back in for adjustments. So, as long as the communication and feedback loops are in there, then this might be, this might not be perfect for everyone, but we'll try to get it as close as possible to accommodating everyone and making it quote-unquote "fair." So, I think that that's important. So, I know that you've communicated with the user groups to get their input, and now that we have this facility agreement in place, I'm assuming that these organizations are being communicated what their fees are so that they can do their budgeting. And, okay, okay, I just wanted to get that verified, that this is coming in, this is going to hit their budgets this upcoming year. Therefore, I don't want it to be another situation where there wasn't true customer service, where after the fact, they got a bill.
Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, this is, this structure's been posted to the website prior to the previous community meetings. It was, and I think we proactively tried to make sure that people understood that this meeting was happening and that this was out there. So, I mean, I think we, we've gone ahead and, and I think done our duty as far as, and as a matter of fact, we've had a couple of conversations with folks that have run this through their budget and said, "Here's what I got." And, and I know we did it in at least one case in a detailed manner, and said, "Well, here's what we got, and let's talk about..." So, exactly that point, especially with the bigger users, is, is we don't want the bill to come and to be a surprise. So, if you're thinking something, and we're thinking something different, let's get on the same page and figure out what those assumptions are, so that when that first bill comes, we both understand. You may not, I mean, I'm not guaranteeing anybody's going to like that bill, but, but it's not going to be a shock, so absolutely.
You know, we did, we, we sent information to every user group that we had on record now, and invited them to the meetings. Now, not all the user groups showed up. Not all the user groups were there, but the ones that were there, we listened to, and as Chris said, had a number of engagement meetings on this. So, those groups that were engaged, this should not be a surprise.
Anyone else? Let me risk being redundant here. But first, let me just thank our administration for looking into this. Again, it's my understanding that the district had set fees in 1982, hadn't really changed them until 2010, and then it was only a marginal increase. And perhaps this pill would have been much easier to swallow had these fees been, had they kept pace with the district's actual costs, the marginal costs for keeping these facilities open for other groups to use. And then, thank you to the administration for, for calculating what, what our actual marginal costs are. Because in our environment of charging high fees to our students and parents, being in the situation where we have to lay off any employee, we must balance our budget, and we must cover our costs on the, we, on the items such as renting our facilities to external The one thing I want to, the one thought I want to leave with is, has been covered, just the stress, to stress communication between the school district and our users, and to work with them to fine-tune our, fine-tune the sharing of our costs, and if we can ways, find ways to save them money, to work with them to do that. And that's, that's all I had to say, that, that I think we should express a commitment to our users to keep the line of communications open. So, with that, we need a roll call vote.
Ms. Hirsch?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Mrs. D'Arone?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes. Seven ayes, no nays. Motion passes. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the resolution to appoint to the DuPage Area Occupational Education System Board of Directors. Can I ask? Mrs. D'Arone? Go ahead.
I move that the Board of Education appoint Dr. Charles Johns, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, to serve as its representative to the DuPage Area Occupational Education System Board of Directors for the 2012-2013 school year.
Second. Moved by Mrs. D'Arone, seconded by Mr. McDonough. Any discussion? Mrs. Stufan? Mrs. Stefen?
Can we just provide a little bit more background for everyone on that?
Shall we ask Mr. Purno to do so?
Either.
I'm going to turn it over to Dr., since he is the person on the point.
The DuPage Area Occupational Education System provides a school for vocational education for our students. It's a really wonderful place where the students who elect to go there can learn about fire science to be eligible to become fire fighters. There's also an EMS, numerous different food certifications that students can learn, earn there. There's a landscaping program as well. So, it's for students, an off-site facility that we share with other DuPage area schools, high schools, to provide some more opportunities for our students. In this role, I function like a board member, and meet about eight times a year for functions from employees to financial to curriculum. And student recognition.
How is this funded?
We all, some of the funds come from our Perkins allocation, a federal grant, and they essentially are a part of a pass-through, and for students that attend there, they keep a portion of it, or it's tuition-funded as well from our funds.
Mrs. Walsh, we call the roll, please.
Mrs. Droni?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Stefen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Abner?
Yes.
Ms. Hirsch?
I have to think about this. It's a yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes. Seven ayes, one thinking about it. No nays, motion carries. The next is a review of our upcoming meetings, of which there are several. Thursday, July 26, the Finance and Operations Committee meeting, 6:30 p.m. at the District 205 Center, Room 217. Wednesday, July 31, the Board Improvement and Policy Committee meeting at 7:00 p.m. in this building, Room 217. Wednesday, August 1, the Curriculum and Instruction Committee meeting at 7:00 p.m. in this building, in Room 217. And finally, Tuesday, August 14, the Board of Education General Meeting at 7:30 p.m. in this building, Rooms 215, 16, and 17. The next item on our agenda is action out of closed session, employment of employee. Anyone a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the administrative salaries as recommended by the administration.
Second. Photo finish, just, Mr. McDonough, I think actually knows under the wire first. So, moved by Mrs. Abner, seconded by Mr. McDonough, Mrs. Walsh, or I'm sorry, any discussion, please, I'm sorry. And before we start discussion, can I just turn this over to Mr. Purno just for a brief explanation?
Yes. What we discussed in closed session that I'm asking the Board to adopt is a salary compensation package based on what we did with the teachers group, which is based on the CPI for the revenue that we receive in the current school year. So, as I think Board members understand, the current school year we're looking for, the CPI was 1.5%. I am asking that there's a differentiation between some of the administrators, and the differentiation is this, I am asking that those administrators who have been in their position less than two years receive half of the CPI as an increase, which would be 0.75 for this coming school year. Those administrators who have been here longer than two years and actually experienced a two-year pay freeze during that period, receive the full CPI for this year, which would be 1.5%. And so, that's the differentiation that I'm recommending for the Board this evening for salary compensation. There would be no other changes in the salary compensation for the administrative group.
Any discussion? Hearing none? Mrs. Droni?
I would just like to say that I will be supporting this motion. It has been explained to us that this is what the superintendent needs in order to lay the groundwork for future employee evaluations and salary increases, and I will support him in that.
Mrs. Walsh, we call the roll, please.
Mrs. Abner?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Stefen?
Yes.
Mrs. Droni?
Yes.
Ms. Hirsch?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes. Seven ayes, no nays, motion carries. The next item on our agenda is Board Communications, and it's my understanding we have several things to talk about. If I can direct a little bit, can I start with Mrs. Stefen to talk about our Board retreat and the next steps?
Okay. As IASB guideline state, after we have a Board self-evaluation, it's important for us to communicate to the public that we did officially have our Board self-evaluation, and we actually identified some next steps. So, I'm just going to run through a few of these items. What we're going to do with these next steps is, we'll be working with them as a full Board, but there are some items that we need more work to be done, and so, it'll go into the Board Improvement Committee, and it'll be on upcoming committee meetings that we'll be talking about how exactly we can implement it and come up with a recommendation to the full Board, so the full Board then has the background and can agree how we implement some of these things. So, just some of the next steps are very similar to what we were doing. It's an expansion of our community outreach, and we really want to identify and make sure that we have all of our specific constituent subgroups represented at those forums. So, that's one item that we're going to be looking at. And we're also going to be looking at, you know, making sure that, you know, we as a Board of seven have consistent messages, you know, with the district, with those community groups as well. We would really like to have a survey of students, parents, and staff so that we can get, as you keep hearing that we want district performance indicators, one key is to put a stake in the ground and ask everybody, and do an official nationwide, what do I want to say, Dave? It's a norm, it's a national norm, and so that we can compare ourselves against other districts, so it's not just, you know, us. So, two things from that. One, we get a stake in the ground, what do all these groups think, and, you know, what's their feedback, and then we can continue to measure how well we're performing, and the things that we implement, we can say, is it increasing what we expected it to increase, and if not, why not? And keep digging into it until we can resolve the issues. Revisiting our purpose and school liaison programs, we wanted to make sure that we do that, that actually, we've talked about in previous Board meetings, so that's a repeat for all of you, but still, it's something that we want to do because that's really important. It's, it makes sure, the reason why the school liaison program got initiated was, not only did the Board, but Dave, and the district, with a little bit of kind of a sanity check asking them, really wanted to make sure that we're all connecting, and we as a Board also wanted to make sure that we truly understood from a Board perspective, you know, what it's like in the schools and at various different levels of the schools, meaning early childhood, elementary, middle school, and our high school. So, we're going to be revisiting that school, the school liaison program, and making sure that is the purpose the same. And I think that we're going to look at, now that we've been in the program one year, that we might be tweaking the purpose a little bit. The first year was, because we're, a lot of us were new, and we wanted to make sure that we get as much information as we can to be the best decision-makers on behalf of the district and the constituents. We want to develop a formal procedure for feedback loops, so you, you know, you kind of heard it about the facility fees, and you're going to hear about it in the Meet the Board, but we really want to make sure that we have this feedback loop, that information comes in, and we start looking at, you know, is, if it's an, if you look at the IASB, you will hear that there's customer and owner issues. Customer issues are those one-off things that are taking place, but if it's consistent or if it's coming from a lot of different constituent groups, then it becomes an owner issue. There's something systemic that we need to be looking at, and we need to get feedback on that. We need to validate, is it a systemic issue? If it is, it's a Board issue, and we need to understand what are, what's the plan that we're going to put in place? And are we, is that plan getting, giving us the progress that we're looking for? Review of the Meet the Board, so you'll hear a little bit about that. We really believe in going out to our constituent groups, so that's what we wanted to do with the Meet the Board, meaning that we have an opportunity when we have these Board meetings that are set up for a year, we can have periodically sessions, what, that we'll call Meet the Board, prior to our Board meetings where the public can come and talk to us. And so, what we want to do is make sure that we fine-tune that process and that forum for the constituent groups. We talked about committees, and we want to make sure that we identify outcomes and goals, and that the committee work is recommendations to the full Board, and that we provide the right level of communication so that we can ensure that the public still understands what we're doing, whether they can meet as often as we do and go to all the committee meetings or not. Last, but not least, is reach Board consensus on key questions that we feel are important to be addressed and answered so that we feel as though we have enough background and the right key elements of everything that comes from the administration to us as a Board so that, so that our decisions are solid. Sufficiency?
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Stefen? Let me move on to other topics. Why don't we, Mr. Bloom, can you give the Board a quick update on the TIF process and the meetings that have been held and where things stand? And I point out that we're talking about this under Board Communications because TIF is the concern of the entire Board and is kept at the entire, at the full Board level.
And there was also a Park City School meeting, a regularly scheduled communication meeting where TIF wasn't on the agenda, but we loved getting together so much that we decided to do it again. Do you want to, should I table that one?
No, you can just weave that in.
We'll just, we'll just start with that. Okay, on Monday, representatives from the Park District and Schools got together, administrative, administrative, elected officials, the purpose of these meetings is just to share respective updates. The only significant item of note for us was that the city, the city's working on a plan to deal with stormwater. There are two aspects of that plan, a sanitary-slash-sewage aspect, and I hope I'm getting this right, but, and then there's a flooding and a runoff kind of storage part. The sanitary's part doesn't affect us. I guess they've gotten some plans back, and they're handling that, and it's not our impact. They expect to get a first track, first draft of recommendations from an advisory group they had put together within the next few weeks that they will be sharing with us. The discussions with the Parks and District 205 will necessarily follow, you know, I think we talked about envisioning something similar to the way that TIF's being handled to the extent that, you know, we're talking about where to put water and how the district and how the parks can help the city in doing that. That would be something where I think we would have a, you know, probably a couple of members from the Board and a couple of members from the city and a couple of members from the park, you know, similar to the way that we're doing TIF, you know, enter into those discussions, but there's a commitment to communication, and in fact, we did have a, you know, question that says, you know, I know we didn't handle TIF as well as we may have wanted to, let's make sure that we do this one, you know, we learn from that, and we do this one with full communication. So, I throw that out there as, that when that, when they start to get more information around what shape this is going to start to take, they, you know, they're committed to engaging us on that. And then the last piece that was discussed was, you know, a desire to add a proactive component to push efficiencies between the government bodies around the topic of working together. I think, you know, Dave talked about the district and the parks on the maintenance side. You know, I think what we've, what we've asked is to noodle on, to different groups, noodle on areas where we might do that, but let's pick, you know, three to five impactful areas to work. So, you know, there may be some areas where we could work together which really doesn't have a huge impact, we want to prioritize. You know, a couple of low-hanging fruit items to pull down and start working on together, obviously, maintenance is one of them. I think IT got mentioned as an area where there may be some savings and consolidation, whether it's through disaster recovery, some of the other stuff. Again, now you're past my area expertise, so I'll leave it there, but, but the point being that cooperation, communication, and working together is something that I think from this, from this group's standpoint, we think that we should be more than just an information exchange. And so, that was that piece, and I guess I'll throw that up and have a question.
I'm fully supportive of trying to work with the Park District, the city, to try to come up with increased intergovernmental opportunities for cost savings for all three organizations. We all serve the same master. I think that's an excellent initiative, and if there are ways that we can find cost savings, I think that's something that we should aggressively pursue. The question I have is, can you provide any more information about any initial discussions that have taken place with regard to stormwater runoff?
I have no idea. I don't know what happened before I joined this committee. I know that it's been an issue. I'd been tangentially following it as a resident of Elmhurst, but it's, I don't know, Jim, you've got any ideas on that?
There, while I still was attending the meetings as a member of that committee, there, the city had shared with the committee some maps of potential stormwater runoff areas, talks about, you know, as it would pertain to the school district, taking some playgrounds, you know, digging, you know, basically putting them below grade level so that stormwater could be pumped into them or runoff into them. But very tentative areas, I'm sure we can dig out the maps and distribute them to the Board. You know, it's, it is very preliminary stages, some involving park land, some involving school land, some involving city land, you know, and even the talk of, you know, potentially, you know, buying properties to use as stormwater runoff areas. And then, like I said, we can share those maps if you're interested with any Board member that's interested, but they were very preliminary. The program is, and my impression, was extremely expensive, and at its very beginning stages. And, Mr. Purno, do you have anything to add to that?
The only thing that I know is that part of this was being done by committee assignments, citizens committees, and those committees are still working, and they're, the city is waiting for a final report, and it sounded like at the last meeting and conversation with Jim Gabowski, they're about a month to two months away from having any kind of final. So, that has been kind of put on a shelf right now. They're still waiting for the reports to be finalized and then presenting that to the community.
I would concur with Mr. Bloom that the TIF discussion didn't go as well as we would have hoped, I think, in terms of communication, Board to Board, administrator to administrator. I'm not sure where the gaps were, but if there are discussions that need to take place in terms of stormwater, I think that's something that if we can get an idea and hear that committee's report, recommendations back to the City Council, when it's regarding our property, I think it's something that we have a vested interest in and might have some thoughts on how that might be utilized. So, I'd just like to encourage us, again, to be proactive about our discussions with the other governing bodies.
And that's, I think, mainly the reason we get together is to have those things moving along. Didn't function the way it should have with TIF, but we're committed to learning. The other thing, and I misspoke with a few weeks, I guess, Dave heard it, it's a couple months before that community report comes out, so, and they brought it up to us and saying, we want to share these with you, we want to start the conversation. One of the other things, just, is it potentially the maps that you're talking about, I do recall hearing, you know, and Jim Gabowski was saying, is, these aren't, these aren't programs to create swaps. I mean, this is, you know, whatever they do would be something that is landscaped to the point where it's usable and, you know... to the point where it's usable and it looks great. It's just in an emerg, I mean, kids aren't drowning on playgrounds kind of thing. I mean, I don't want everybody to get freaked out about, you know, what it is. It's, it would be something that would be dual-use that, you know, hopefully you wouldn't really notice if you weren't looking for it. So I just want to get that out there so that we don't think we're creating swamps on Shifting gears to TIF, we've had a series of meetings between the city, District 205 and the, the Park District has joined us, which between the three of us represent a majority of the property tax bill. And they've been good productive discussions, you know, I think of, as we've tried to advance the ball. At the last meeting, as we discussed, the district presented a proposed sharing agreement modeled after the TIF III agreement. So, you know, I think, and just to remind everyone, the concept there was is that the District 205, the taxpayers in District 205 get natural growth increment from the, from the TIF area, recognizing that we're freezing EAV at a low point in the market and that there's some natural growth within that area and that there's a desire to share with, with the district taxpayers that natural growth increment and then fund the, fund the increment beyond that for, for the development side of it. We're trying to propose, propose a very simplified structure. It's a straight sharing agreement, a percentage of increment, and we think it's a risk-sharing agreement which mitigates the city's downside in that if it doesn't generate increment, they don't owe us anything, and if it does, we share on the upside. So that was the way TIF III worked, and I think that, I think that the city and the district from a structural standpoint are, you know, in pretty decent shape as it pertains to agreeing on, on our approach. And again, the principle underlying that, that TIF III sharing agreement is that successful development should benefit both the city and the district. The city receives sales tax revenue as generated and the District 205 taxpayer receives the benefit from the development 23 years hence, and a sharing agreement is what allows us to receive some of that benefit earlier. And as you heard in our earlier conversations, that, that would be very positive and needed in an environment where we've been laying off teachers. The other, the other part of this is we're working on an agreement which reaffirms the, the mutual obligations of the city and the, and the taxing bodies of the school district with respect to the 2004 intergovernmental agreement regarding surplus distributions. I mean, there's a spreadsheet that the city updated, I think we reviewed. I think we agree that the mechanics make sense. I think we'd like to reaffirm those mechanics to make sure that they're clear. But in addition, one of the proposals on the table from the city now in TIF IV is to move some properties from TIF I to TIF IV, which we believe will require an amendment to that agreement, so we're working through that. You know, again, in anticipation that, that allowing them to move the properties from TIF I to TIF IV is going to be included in the final sharing agreement. But again, I described the conversations as positive. Both sides are working hard. To have the economics agreed to, I think our target is prior to the, to the public hearing on the 6th. And then the sharing agreement and the intergovernmental agreement amendment reaffirmation formally approved at the same time TIF IV is approved, which I think is targeted for the 20th. So I don't, I know John has been at some of these meetings. Dave, Jim, if you guys have any, if I've misinterpreted anything, please feel free to jump in. Any questions?
Mrs. Daroni.
Did I hear you say that as part of the new written understanding of the 2004 intergovernmental agreement, that there would be a portion that would talk about the Han Street property, us approving that going to the new TIF?
John, do you want to address the legal or the mechanical part of that? I think we've been...
Our understanding is that the 2004 agreement wouldn't allow that, and there are discussions with the city as to what the impact of that happening would be to address those impacts as part of an amendment agreement that would acknowledge the district's agreement to allow that to happen. So it would be an amendment of the 2004 agreement to make clear that that's something the city can do, given that there is an element of compensation for that happening that reflects the changed situation of the district, should that happen.
Anyone else? Mrs. Hirsch.
In going back and looking over the wording of TIF III, which is what we're attempting to base this agreement on, if you go back and look at the actual ordinance that was passed by the city, if you look at the minutes of when the city was actually discussing this, the concept of a revenue sharing agreement was included in the wording of the TIF, of TIF III as it was created in 1996. So my question is, do we have a commitment from the city council? I'm not sure at what level we could get this commitment at this point in time, that the ordinances that are being prepared for what we're referring to as TIF IV, North Avenue up all the way north, I'm not even talking about the moving of the Han Street properties in, but do we have a commitment from the people that we are working with, the elected officials, that the ordinance is going to include wording in the ordinance which refers to a revenue sharing agreement with the schools at this point in time? I mean, it's one thing to agree upon a number and a percentage and how we're going to do this, but do we first have commitment from the representatives, the elected officials that we're working with, that the wording is going to be included in the ordinances?
First off, I think if you read the ordinance, I think it just says that the city wants to share, and I think that is the extent of what was in the ordinance. I think that that is a very low bar for us. I think our desire is to have a much more delineated agreement in place so that, so that it's not vague, because, I mean, there's no, I couldn't find an agreement. I mean, it was, it was written in minutes, there was a mechanical thing that was set up. Again, I think both sides have committed to putting an agreement. The lawyers are going to figure out the structure. We're not there yet. I haven't had those discussions yet. I think we've asked our, our council and their council to get together and work through how it gets documented, and they'll come back to us with, with the recommended format. So I, we haven't waded into that, but I think your point is valid in that we're looking for something that is clear and mutually understood and enforceable, so.
I guess my point is beyond that. It's that, you know, at this point in time, the JRB has approved the TIF IV, and there really is no stopping the TIF. So at this point in time, it's, you know, they can move forward with sharing nothing with the school district and the park district, or they could move ahead, you know, working together and sharing. And so I'm, I'm trying to take baby steps and say, do we first have a commitment to some kind of revenue sharing? Have we even gotten that far, other than discussing what the actual numbers are going to look like?
Yes, I think there's a commitment from the city for revenue sharing. I think that, you know, we fully understand that they don't have to do it. They can move along the way they want. I think they've expressed the interest in working out something that they believe is fair. We're negotiating what fair means at this point in time. You know, and this isn't something about leverage enforcing, this is about, you know, governmental entities working together to do what's best for, for the citizens of Elmhurst, and I'm hoping that we're all on the same page with that. I think we are.
I guess my goal, or my thought, is that we would really, it would be in our best interest and it would be the best demonstration to the taxpayer that we are working together, that this is part of the entire package that the city council is going to approve in August, is what I'm hoping that we're working towards, that it's not just that as the aldermen take into consideration what this TIF looks like, the size, the scope, the redevelopment plan, the investment, and all of those things, but the revenue sharing is a key component of that as well and will affect their redevelopment dollars and their planning. And so I'm...
Absolutely, and that's what I sit here, which is...
Probably preaching to the choir, but I'm just...
Right. Our desire is, is that everything gets approved at the same time. Okay, we're working hard to get there, and, and as of right now, we're expecting to get there. So, you know, all we can do is, is push the ball down the field.
Mr. McDonough, do you have something?
I just wanted to say, you know, we've said this before, TIF is a community decision to devote resources in a certain way, and it just, it makes sense that the public should understand all the components of it when it moves forward, and it should be presented as a package. That's our feeling, and we're stating that clearly. I think there's also a legal basis for it as well as just a good idea, but it is a good idea for it all to go at one time.
And Mrs. Hirsch, also, as an answer to your question, we've expressed our desire to the city to have them vote on everything at once, an intergovernmental agreement the same night they vote on their TIF. Now, as far as the specific mechanics of whether it's spelled out in their TIF ordinance or whether it's a separate intergovernmental agreement, as you know, we've retained legal counsel and expert in TIF to represent the Board of Education and the children of Elmhurst's interest in that. You know, and I'm quite sure that, that we'll get to the proper mechanics of, of how to make that happen. Mrs. Stufan, did you have something?
I did. I just wanted to clarification that, that August 20th is the end date where, where everything is approved for TIF moving forward from the city, right? That's the date?
I think that's their current intention, yes.
Okay. And so that's our timeframe of getting, continuing to work with the, all the governmental bodies to ensure that the right thing is done for everyone.
And in addition to that, it's, it's our goal to have at least agreements in principle by the time of the public hearing on August 6th. So we're working hard, we're working fast.
When is the city coming back with a counterproposal from what you presented on Friday? Was it Friday?
Yeah, it was Friday. Actually, I'm just hoping they're coming back with an acceptance, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, right. When are they coming back with something?
We meet next on Thursday.
Okay.
So there'll be another meeting till we're here, because I understand that when we met with them, it was, it was for, it was Mike Kopp and Tom Trizine, and then their council, and then the King McKenna representative, and so none of the elected officials were there. So they had to have a conversation with their folks based on what we had presented, and, and we scheduled Thursday to get back together to kind of pull all that together. So again, we've set out the timeframe and we've, you know, the folks at the city have hemmed and hawed a bit, but I mean, I think agreed that we're going to try to push for that and we're going to keep moving it.
But when you say they'll come back with acceptance, what you proposed was a range, so there's going to be some...
I think in concept, we said, well, I mean, it's applying TIF III, applying the concepts and the principles of TIF III to, to TIF IV. And so I think that, that's what I mean by, just coming back and saying, yeah, okay, that makes sense. I'm kidding, but, you know, from, yeah, okay, we're just going to take that, but, you know, I think the conversation continues. The good news is, is I think we've settled on a structure that's much more simplified than I think the original proposal. I think it's going to be very easy to document once it gets agreed to, knock on wood, and so hopefully that'll add to the, our ability to do this in a timely fashion. But I, you know, at this point, I don't know. We've, we've just given them, you know, the principles that we want to use and what that would work out to, and we're going to wait and see what their reaction is.
Just to review the process, they, the city gave us a proposal. We met as a full board to discuss that proposal, agreed to some goals and some parameters to work with, and then Mr. Bloom, Mr. Pernod took those back to the city with some more specifics, and Mr. McDonough as well, sorry, not to...
You're not getting off that easy, but...
And, and made them a proposal. They're now discussing our proposal, so we're in negotiation. Mrs. Daroni.
So will we, all of this is going to take place before we have another board meeting on August 14?
Well, we're the, we're not strangers to special meetings.
That was my question. Are we anticipating that there will be an additional meeting in there somewhere if we can get a quorum and people aren't away, to agree on whatever they come back with?
Right.
Should it not be just what you presented?
Right. This is the matter of the full board, and anything that's agreed upon will be brought to the full board.
We have a, we have a meeting on August 14th, which would be before the city council meets on August 20th. It would be very nice to have that agreement in print.
I would hope that we would be getting back together before the public hearing to discuss what they've, you know, bounced back and kind of where we've gone and present, because I think in order to get to, what do you call it, an understanding, or a, I've drawn a blank, what we're trying to get to before the, for the public hearing.
Letter of understanding.
Yeah, letter of understanding, or whatever you call it, that in order to get there, we would have to have consent of all of us, so there will be a conversation before that.
Okay. Any, Sharon?
Just one more question. At the meeting on Thursday, are you expecting elected officials to be present? I mean, we have certain limitations in terms of open meeting, posting open meetings. We are having two board members attend, but they are not having any elected officials attend, and I'm interested in hearing your feedback on the communications cycle and what it takes and why it's all staff on their side and it's a mixture of elected officials and staff on our side. I would think that we would want to have a similar makeup in terms of support and a clear understanding of what the goals are.
Just, if I could just clarify, I mean, just the most recent meeting, they only had staff at. We have no idea why there were no elected officials there, but when we, when our group came, I was not present, it was just city staff there with no explanation as to why, but the assurance that they would communicate it to the city council.
But the rhythm in the past has been a mixture. I mean, our mayor showed up along with two or three aldermen at the meeting before that, I think, and we had another meeting where there were, I mean, it was a mixture. It was kind of a couple from their side, a couple from our side. Again, not to violate any, any open meetings issues, so it, it has been matched up. This last meeting was just one that just happened to be that way.
Any other board communications for the evening? Mrs. Stufan?
The Meet the Board?
Sure.
Okay. So maybe we'll end on a happy note, right? What we wanted to do is, the last time that we, as a board, met, we had a Meet the Board, so it's very important from our perspective is to do a follow-up. So first off, we wanted to thank everyone from the public who attended our first Meet the Board, and what we wanted to do is just provide at, at least at a high level, what the process is going to be, because I think that's important, again. So we, when we have the Meet the Boards, we're going to capture the community concerns, communicate them, and have discussions with the superintendent, and he then will have discussion with the cabinet to kind of sort through them and validate them, and for the, and create a plan that, and put together a plan for the valid concerns, which will include, you know, feedback loops, follow-up, communication points. So we just wanted to make sure that that was communicated to the public so that you understand what the process will be around those Meet the Boards. Thank you.
Sorry, any questions or discussion about Meet the Board? Okay?
Motion to adjourn?
Move by Mrs. Hirsch.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Daroni. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.